Mr. Stembridge. Mr. Valencia.
President.
Mr. Langham.
Present.
Ms. Weewell.
Present.
Mr. Collins.
President.
Floor is yours, Mr. Stembridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we start on the hearing scheduled for 11:00 a.m., we'll ask if there are any requests for withdrawals or deferrals from the time frame.
Just a reminder again that we are a six-member board. Is that Mr. Maranti? Are you speaking of deferral?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair.
Okay, can you let us know what address?
It's the bottom of page five, the fourth hearing for 11:00 a.m., 400 to 408 West Broadway.
So that would be for case BOA 1625940 with the address of 400 to 408 West Broadway. Would you go ahead and explain it to me, Mr. Maranti?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Maranti. I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, I'm advised that there was an advertising issue with this matter. It has been re-advertised and advised that the new hearing date is September 24th.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer this case until September 24th.
Second. Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Mr. Stembridge, 275 Gold Street, please.
275 Gold Street. So that is case BOA 1630349 with the address of 275 Gold Street. Would you go ahead and explain, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stembridge. Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney Ryan Spitz, Adams and Maranti, business address of 168 Eighth Street, Third floor, South Boston. We are keeping an administrative profile tonight to be heard upon the full board.
Okay, now on the updates.
Yeah, so just to clarify, it would just be a deferral, not administrative deferral. So the deferral, the first one we have would be October 8th.
That will be, that will work, thank you.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer to October the 8th.
Second. Second. Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, see you then.
Thank you.
If there are no further requests for withdrawals or deferrals, we'll return to the hearing scheduled for 11:00 a.m. First, we have case BOA 1637375 with the address of 336 Meridian Street. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they explain to the board, please?
Yes, good morning, Mr. Stembridge, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins with the business address of 245 Summer Street, East Boston, behalf of the petitioner, George Rodriguez. We probably could start on this third slide here. Just by way of quick overview, this project involves the change of occupancy for a pre-existing series of row houses. The row house we're looking at is 336 Meridian Street. A number of these proposals have been before the board previously and have received relief under the prior zoning provisions of Article 53. With the amendments to Article 53, this is now located in the EBR 4th District, and the relief that is being requested is absolutely minimal. If we want to jump down to the, I think the slide eight would be the survey. There we go. So with respect to the proposal, Madam Chair, members of the board, this changed the occupancy from the three existing units to four units and modifies the rear deck that exists presently on the building to enclose those, to add additional gross void area. The violations were the rear yard setback and insufficient off-street parking. This is under the new zoning amendments, so a number of the other violations that typically appear have been eliminated. As you can see from the survey, our setback currently to the decks is 8.4 feet. We propose no additional increase in that setback. If anything, we just enclose what's there. Because of the reconstruction of those decks that are non-conforming, we are required to seek relief for the rear yard. However, nothing with respect to the footprint changes. With respect to off-street parking, as this board is aware, this site does not allow for access to any of the area of land, even if off-street parking were available. In order to create a curb cut, we would be required to take away off-street parking, which is certainly crowded upon by BTD and public works. So the relief is relatively minimal. I can jump down to the floor plans, slide 11, just so we can see what the renovation would look like. This building does have a sub-basement as well as a lower level. We'll see that in the elevation in a moment. The scope of work really just deals with that lower-level plan that we see here in the middle of the screen, allowing for a full residential unit at that level. As indicated, this is not unlike the adjoining buildings along this walk where we've made similar renovations and changes of occupancy. If we can jump down to perhaps slide 13, that'll show the elevations. On the left side, we do see, this is a three-story building from Meridian Street. We don't make any change with respect to that facade. You do see the rear elevation on the right side with that enclosed condition where those existing decks are. We are also proposing a roof deck, Madam Chair, and because this is considered a three-story building from Meridian Street, the access via hatch is permitted. I would also point out that under amended Article 53, roof decks are deemed compliant provided they meet with the specifications for roof decks. At this point, I will pause for any questions of the board, but as you can see, the relief is relatively straightforward.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Emma Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 336 Meridian Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an a-butter's meeting on July 30th of this year, which was not attended by any constituents. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed by the Eagle Hill Civic Association, which voted 12 in favor and 2 opposed, and provided a letter of support. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services differs to the board's decision. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Maranti.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Sebastian Parha from Councilor Colletta's office, and the council would like to go and support this project based on its alignment with plenty's Boston, to the exception of the parking for the new unit. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chair, I have no raised hands. Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review and Boston Water sewer review. Yeah.
Madam Chair, may I ask what the mark server?
Is that the next? I think he's looking at the next case, are you?
Oh, sorry. Am I looking at the wrong one?
It's approval.
Approval, sorry.
Okay, may I have a second?
Second.
Sorry, Mr. Collins, could you repeat your motion?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Next, we have two companion cases, first being case BOA 1627289, the address of 238 to 240 Maverick Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1627005, also with the address of 238 to 240 Maverick Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the cases to the board?
Yes, thank you again, Mr. Stembridge, Madam Chair, members of the board. Richard Lins, business address of 245 Summer Street, East Boston, on behalf of the petitioner, Matt Wessels. If we can start with slide two. This is a pre-existing three-unit dwelling located in the Jeffries Point neighborhood of East Boston, the corner of Cottage and, I'm sorry, yeah, McCabe, is it McCabe Place and Maverick Street. I would point out, if we jump to the next slide, you can see a better view of the street. Just down to slide three, please. I can see the existing conditions. As the board will note, this property was originally a, probably a retail store at the lower level with residential units above. Part of the request involves the confirmation of occupancy as three units, but of course, the change of occupancy to four units. This was, if we can jump to the next slide, this was submitted under the prior provisions of Article 53. And as you can see, the building itself is a pre-existing non-conforming structure. Being a corner lock condition, there are minimal setbacks that have been in existence since this building was built. Go to the next slide, please. Just another view, and this actually provides a little bit of context for what's immediately adjacent to it. I'm sorry, this, it is Cottage Street. You can see that we do have a four-story building behind it. With the changes to the amendments to Article 53, this building is now in the EBR 4th District. So a number of the violations that were cited and as indicated in the public notice for this project have been either limited or would be eliminated after current zoning, with the exception of off-street parking. If we jump to the next slide, please. As we can see here, as I indicated, this is an EBR 4th District, next slide. And we'll stop here for a moment just to run through some of the zoning matters that are involved. So with respect to the issues that are before the board that are cited in the public notice, multifamily use was cited as forbidden. However, in the EBR 4th District, a multifamily use is now permitted. With respect to the dimensional matters that are involved, excessive FAR was also cited within the EBR 4, under the amendments to Article 53, there is no longer a maximum FAR, so that no longer would be applicable. We also were cited for insufficient lot area and insufficient usable open space. Those two are also eliminated under the amendments to Article 53, and therefore, no longer be violations. We were also cited for excessive height and stories. The changes to Article 53 now allow for a four-story building in this district, and they also allow the 50 feet in height. Our building is proposed at a maximum of 48 feet. If we jump to the next slide, it gives a different perspective on the rendering. It could look, yeah, perfect. With respect to the remaining dimensional violations that were cited under Article 53, that includes side yard, rear yard, and front yard, and that specifically deals with the addition, which typically would have been cited under the prior versions of Article 53. Article 5330 now allows for vertical additions to continue up to the maximum height limit, provided that they do not exceed the existing footprint for which they sit on. So essentially, as long as you're not making any of those non-conformities any worse, you can go up vertically for an existing building in East Boston, provided that you stay within the height limit, and that's exactly what we've proposed here. We also were cited for off-street parking. As mentioned in the previous presentation, this site would not be able to accommodate any off-street parking, even if it were. A curb cut would not be preferable, and BTD and public works actually discourage creating private off-street parking, but it's only for one vehicle. So we are requesting a variance for that. If you can jump down to the next slide, please. Just another view here of the side view on Cottage Street, next slide, please. We can probably jump two more slides. Three more, sorry. Next one, please. Yeah, this is a good one. So as you can see here, we maintain the existing footprint. There are some additional bump outs that are being added. The two that are on Cottage Street within the property boundary, there's an existing bump out that is already at the corner of Maverick and Cottage. The bump outs do not violate the front yard or side yard requirements as they are permitted extensions under the zoning code and certainly under the dimensional regulations of Article 53 that allow for what we consider bay windows. Next slide, please. Just our floor layouts. We essentially are not changing anything with respect to the lower levels. There is some reprogramming of the space. If we want to jump down to the next slide and just look at the fourth level, that is probably the only one that's really relevant at this point. Next slide, please. Is it the fourth level here? One of the things that we do also have is a proposed roof deck. We have a companion case for building code relief, as this would be a four-story building. We are proposing, consistent with board's past practice and the community's preference, to not incorporate the headhouse for a private roof deck, and therefore, requesting the appropriate building code relief from the board with respect to access by hatch. And last but not least, this isn't within the G code. We have provided the Boston Water and Sewer approval along with a no-harm letter. Happy to pause at this point, answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, can I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Emma Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 238 to 240 Maverick Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an a-butter's meeting held on 21524 of this year, which was lightly attended by two constituents. The proposal did also meet with the civic association, which was Gulf Street Civic Association, and they voted eight in support and three opposed to the proposal. They did provide a letter where they requested a planning department review to ensure cohesion among design of the whole property. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you very much.
Sebastian, and then Christian.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Sebastian Parha from Councilor Colletta's office. At this time, the council would like to go and support this project because of its compliance with plenty's Boston, to the exception of the on-street parking. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Christian Semley, Boston Groundwater Trust, and we have both the BWSC approval and no-harm letters from the applicant.
Yes.
Thank you.
And I have no additional raised hands. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Now I will motion to approve with BPDA design review and Boston Water and Sewer sign off.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you very much.
The next two cases are deferred, so that will take us to case BOA 1605933 with the address of 53 Burrell Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Hi, Madam Chair. Hi, Jessica.
Yep, I see Charlie, I just tried to make panelists. One second. Oh. God, Charlie, you're on mute, but I did try to make you a panelist. Then I mute you in the next, you to unmute yourself again.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the board. My name is Charlie Tevnen. I'm an attorney with the business address of 15 Broad Street, Boston, on behalf of the applicant, Sean George, and Patrick Hadon, owner of the property of, at 53 Burrell Street. The proposal is to construct a three-family dwelling at 53 Burrell Street. The zoning district is three-family, 4,000, and the lot size is 2,521 square feet. There are two side-by-side garages on the existing property which are in disrepair. If approved by the board, the garages will be replaced by a three-family dwelling. The carp owner's business nearby is Hakon Construction, and this property, if approved by the board, would provide the possible additional housing for some of its employees. And there was a presentation to the Dudley Street Neighborhood Initiative. There were no objections, and I would at this time defer to Sean George, who could answer any design-related questions. I also did ask the zoning ambassador if you could add a single exhibit, which is a Google map photo of the existing condition of the, at the property.
Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. Claude Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office could defer to the judgment of this board. ONS hosted a meeting for this proposal on June 4th. No concerns raised in that meeting, it was lightly attended. The applicant, as you heard from the representation, went on to meet with the Dudley Square Neighborhood Initiative in July. We're unaware of any concerns at this time, but that would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, see no raised hands at the moment. Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge.
Yes.
Mr. Valencia.
Yes.
Mr. Langham.
Yes.
Ms. Weewell.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries, good luck.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, members of the board, and thank you to the zoning ambassador.
Next, we have two more companion cases. First is case BOA 1616343 with the address of 120 Glendalwe Road. Along with that, we have case BOA 1616347 with the address of 124 Glendalwe Road. If the applicant and/or their representative is present, would they please explain the cases to the board?
Yes, good morning, everyone. My name is Joseph Jetero. I am with Heritage Design Collaborative, and I am representing the owner, Alton Lucian, on this project. He is, the scope of the project is, he's intending to subdivide an existing 8,548 square feet lot into two separate lots. The building to the right is the existing building, just to go back a little, the existing building, and we are proposing the building on the left that is encircled with the red. If we can move further down, please. This is the site plan location, just showing existing site in context. Can we go back just a little bit more to the site plan? Thank you. All right, site plan here. In, the outline already is the existing site, and we are proposing to subdivide into two separate lots. I am showing an adjacent property at the rear of our site. In yellow, it's really showing the context of some things similar to what we're doing. There are two houses, two multi-unit houses on a lot very similar to what we have. And that's what we are intending to do on our property. Next slide, please. A little closer up of the two buildings at the rear of our property, just to show the context and to show that something similar to what we're doing will work. It's okay, it doesn't need to be straight, if we could go to the next slide. We need to show a few more contexts of what exists within the street. We have typically, we typically have two and a half stories to three stories with raised foundation on that street and gable roof. So we are proposing something similar to what exists there. Let's go to the next slide. Zoning violations that came along with this. Let's move further down to our proposed site plan. Again, the existing building is on the right, our site plan is on the left there, and we are proposing to have four parking spaces. Each unit will have two spaces, and we are proposing a curb cut along with that. And the violations noted were excessive FAR, and the parking was noted as a violation, but we are in fact providing four parking spaces. And the site setback requirements, we have eight feet on the left-hand side and 12 feet on the right, and we have our front setback will be 20 feet, will align with the existing buildings in the street. Next slide, please. Going to our floor plan, we are proposing a total of three bedrooms per unit, two and a half bath, and open living concept. So the first unit will be on the ground level in first floor, and our second unit will be, we can move to the next slide, will be on the second and third floor. Again, three, two bedrooms, three bedrooms per unit. Next slide, please. The front elevation will compose of materials similar to what exists in the street and in the neighborhood. We are proposing to go up. The height of the building will be 33 feet 6 inches, and part of the first floor unit will be in the garden level unit, the basement unit. Next slide, please. Elevations of different sides of the building and isometric view, just to give you an idea of how far what we are proposing. Next slide. We are rendering to show what exists there on the right and what we are proposing. Again, we are proposing a curb cut. We'll have parking at the rear. So this is what the street view will, will look like. And I'll pause at this point to take any questions from the board. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the board? Hearing none. Can I have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office could defer to the judgment of this board. ONS had hosted a Butters meeting on July 8th. There were a number of residents in attendance. Some had expressed dissatisfaction with what they felt were subpar conditions of the property over the years. There was also some concerns raised regarding the height and massing to the building, and concerns about potential traffic issues during the construction process. The applicant did go on to meet with the West Village Neighborhood Association, which I guess the group was somewhat neutral, but ultimately ended up supporting the proposal, from my understanding. With that, I'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have raised hand, contestants?
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Beautiful. I am at 118 Glendower, which is right next to the proposed property. And I want to say that I really think the 4,000 square foot is too small for the proposed family, two-family house. I will cite that the setback, the foundation, i-if the property line goes in between the two proposed things. There is a part of the property line and the foundation that there would only be two feet, two inches between being the property line of 120, 124 and the foundation of 124. The, the presentation showed that they were gonna remove, in order to put the driveway between the two properties, that they would remove part of the front retaining wall and carve out a driveway leading to the back and the parking. But that, that driveway would be lower, the grade and the level is lower than the 124. And again, because the foundation is so close to the, 124 foundation is so close to the proposed property line, there's no place to put in a retaining wall to accommodate, you know, hold back the property on either side. So that's, that's one of the things that I, I would say. And when they cited the context of the beat street behind, those two houses, they're leveled in, in their, um... They're leveled. So that's one of the great concerns, as well as the fact there are several of the Article 63, Section 9. There are multiple ones for both properties being sought rather than relief for one, and then therefore no relief for the other. I'm also concerned about the-
Can you wrap up, please?
Yeah, I'm concerned about the impact of the construction and the loss of green space on water runoff, drainage, retention, groundwater levels. That's a big concern here because of Stony Brook. And lastly, we are a long, narrow, one-way street, and I'm not sure where all the construction equipment will access, much less the house. There's no room to go around it. I just, the impact on parking, et cetera, would be-
Thank you. Thank you. Jessica, are there other raised hands?
Yes.
So please, please be brief and add new information.
Okay. Of course. My name is Craig Lafayette. I'm at 108 Glendower Road, so just down the road from this proposed property. I do have a couple of questions or concerns. One is the cut-down. This will remove some on-street parking. It's already a little bit tight on that road, and I know they're adding parking behind the building, but this doesn't account for people who already park in those spots who, of course, don't live in the property that hasn't been built yet. I also share some concern about the retaining wall and the drainage in that area. The, the draining house does have a French drain around its foundation, which was added during its renovation. And it appears that the parking, or the driveway for the new unit, is where that French drain is. It doesn't look like that was accounted for, at least that I could tell. And I'm worried that if that French drain was removed, there'd be some flooding issues in that house or possibly on the street. Yeah, those are my main concerns, just parking and drainage in the area. Thank you.
Thank you. And have no additional raised hands at the moment. Would the applicant like to respond? And can you just confirm the curb cut situation, the question about parking?
Yes, so we are proposing a curb cut. So that would essentially create four parking spaces at the rear of the building. But I think the concern is with the curb cut, there might be a reduction of one parking space to create that. I, I think it's a good thing for the project that we are creating parking at the rear of the building. It's alleviating traffic on the road. So I don't see that as a big concern. And as far as the French drain, we are, in preliminary design, there will be opportunities to really look at the site and reroute the French drain if, if needs to. So I think we can overcome some of these issues, most of these issues that, that are pointed out here. Thank you.
Are you with the applicant, or are you?
I am the architect with the applicant, yes.
Okay. Other questions from the board? Okay, hearing none. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPDA design review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. Thank you.
With that, we'll move on to the rediscussions scheduled for 11:30.
Ask about any deferrals or requests?
And we will ask for any withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe also.
Wentey Hinckley Street?
So that is case BOA 1603160 with the address of 20 Hinckley Street. Would you go ahead and explain, please?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Secretary. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with a business address 11 Beacon Street. It was brought to our attention yesterday that the plans examiner is requesting an updated plot plan in service. So we would request a short deferral. We can have that in virtually a week. Board, we have completed all community process.
Okay, everyone?
If we could do October 8th?
That is filling up quick, isn't it? Okay, how's that work for you?
Perfect, thank you, ma'am.
May I have a motion?
Motion to defer to October 8th.
May I have a second?
Back 10.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you.
If there are no more requestful withdrawals or deferrals from this timeframe?
190 R. Power Street, Mr. Secretary?
Yes. So that would be case BOA 1588133 with the address of 190 R. Eric Street. Would you go ahead and explain, please?
Absolutely. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Ekel with Fletcher Tilton with a business address of 100 Franklin Street. This case needed to be re-advertised to add an additional violation for G-Cod. I believe it was already advertised for the October 8th hearing, so we're seeking a deferral at this time.
Okay, with that, may I have a motion?
Motion to defer to October 8th.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. See you then.
Thank you very much.
And hearing none, no other requestful withdrawals or deferrals, I will mention that we are a six-member board. So with that, we will move on to the companion case. Case BOA 1606963 with the address of 30 Concord, Concord Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1601715 with the address of 32 Concord Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain?
Sure. This is Timothy Shan. I'm the architect for both projects. 30 and 32 Concord Street are attached, single families, and currently, they both have small doghouse dormers, both on the Concord Street side. 30 has a, you know, a 10-foot-wide existing shed dormer on the back. 32 Concord Street doesn't have, just has skylights on the back. What we'd like to do is run a dormer, basically all the way across the front, hold it back two and a half feet, two feet, two inches from each side. So there'd be a shed dormer all the way across on the Concord Street front relation side for both projects. And on the back for number 30, we would make the existing shed dormer bigger. And then on number 32, there's nothing there. We'd like to put it as a shed dormer. So basically, all the way across the back and all the way across the front, we'd like to do shed dormers to allow for more space on the bedroom floor, basically the bedroom floor. You know, you're losing a lot of square footage as you get into the eaves, and we'd like to change some, do some floorplan changes as well, floorplan changes as well. Because Charles Stanley is the restricted roof district where we are, we need zoning board approval to let, to allow this to happen. We had a lightly-attended community meeting. And with that, I'll leave it to your questions.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none. May I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board. C. Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This petitioner has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted a Butters meeting on the 24th of June, at which no concerns were raised. We are unaware of any other community concerns at this time. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm trying, seeing no raised hand at the moment. Okay, may I have a motion?
I'm going to make a motion to approve with review on the, with the planning department's review.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stembridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have case BOA 1624853 with the address of 53 to 85 Canal Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Thank you, Mrs. Secretary. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Jeff Drago with Drago &amp; Toscano with a business address of 11 Beacon Street. Here on behalf of the applicant and my client, New Tradition Media, and representing them is Sebastian Amara, who's a representative of the company. The proposal before you at 53-85 Canal Street is a proposal to remove an existing poster structure advertisement board. If we could just stay on this, the above slide. Madam Ambassador, we actually have some pictures, too, I think, that we submitted. If there's other slides in here. There should present, yeah, if you go all the way to the top. Not sure where those went, but I'll just keep going. So it's to remove the existing poster structure on the side of the wall and to replace with a new signboard, 25 by 25 static wall scape. This new sign would have no structure. So currently, on the side of the wall, and I'm not sure where the presentation is. We did submit a full presentation, but if we don't have it, I'll do the best I can to describe it. The existing sign has structure. It has catwalk metal structure affixed to it. And you can see, if we remain on this slide for a minute, that the existing, if you go back down, Madam Ambassador. Do you know, Madam Ambassador, if there's actually a presentation? We did submit one, or is this, this is just the plans? It would be helpful if we have that on, on file, but if, if not, I can just show here. So you can see there's a ladder on the side. There's a metal structure. And the sign is actually bigger that's there right now. It's 24 by 4 by 28. The new sign would not go over the top of the building as the current sign does. It would be smaller at 25 by 25. It would remove all of the structure and just be hung on the side of the building. And working with the community, there's actually, the existing billboard that's on, there is two permitted billboards that are wrapped into one. There's also a permitted billboard on the roof of the building, and all of this was shown in what we had submitted. Not sure where it is. As part of this proposal, we would remove the structure on the top of the roof. So that billboard, that active billboard would come down. We would only have one applicable sign on the side of the building, as opposed to two larger signs wrapped into one. The scaling would not go above the parapet of the building as it does now. And the new sign and all of that metal structure would come down. Just a point to note, and we did have an aerial view of all of this in the presentation. This, the sign on the roof is actually visible from the residential building at One Canal. As part of this proposal, that sign now comes down from the roof. Those folks where their pool area and deck area is no longer have to look at that billboard structure. As we went through the process, we were able to get the support of both the Downtown North Business Association, as well as the West End Civic Association, because we're removing all of these structures as part of the proposal, which were put up by the old applicant. And just to reiterate, there would be no lighting or illumination. This is not a digital billboard in any way. It's just a static sign that's affixed to the building. Basically, what's currently there is the same, except this would be smaller and remove all structures. It lowers the billboard below the roof line, and it's, it is a smaller board on-site, and it removes the view of that rooftop billboard that exists there now from the residential building. We were cited as, again, even though it's basically replacing something that's there, it does get cited as a new board. It falls within the Bull Finch Triangle area, which is mixed-use. There's a lot of commercial and some residential, and that does require a design review, full design review by the BPDA as well. We were cited, it's called Small Project Review. I did speak to the BPDA on that. It's basically the same as what we would call design review, which we were cited for as well. I don't know where the presentation that we submitted is. If we can't find it, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have on this matter.
Madam Chair, I have a question if Mr. Hampton is still on?
Yeah, I'm here. Ms. Weewell, I-
So I'm, I'm pretty familiar with this billboard. My understanding is that they saw the recommendation for denial. My understanding is that they saw the recommendation for denial. If we were to deny this, my understanding is the existing billboard would remain. And maybe just something for my colleagues to consider is it seems like the proposed is a little bit smaller in scale and maybe improves the existing conditions. But I was just curious about the denial recommendation.
So, thank you very much, Ms. Weewell. Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. If you go over the history of billboards in the city that have come before the Board of Appeal, we've recommended denial on all. That's just our policy in the way that we view them right now. It doesn't matter who owns the building or where it is. We haven't supported new billboards at all. I understand what this process is and what it brings. And, you know, it's too bad that there isn't a proposal. That would probably better explain it. But our policy as a city is to recommend denial on billboards.
Okay, thank you.
I did, if I may interject, Ms. Weewell, in reading the recommendation, although it is denial, as Mr. Hampton just explained, it does mention that the structure would actually, the new structure would clean up the existing site by removing all of that metal structure. What it doesn't mention is also the removal, as part of our agreement, of the billboard that sits on the top of the roof. And it's a shame because in our presentation that we submitted, it shows clearly that billboard on the roof, which will come down, that is in complete plain sight of the One Canal residential building. And that was a big factor in getting the support of the two civic associations as well.
Okay.
Can I ask you, if this case is denied, what will happen with the billboard that is there right now?
It would remain. The structure would all remain on site.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board? May I have public testimony?
Good morning, Madam Chair and Members of Board. My name is Ava Jones, representing the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Regarding 85 Canal Street, our office will defer to the board's judgment on this matter. A community process was conducted, including an abutter's meeting held on 7/8 of this year, which was attended by no constituents. Additionally, the proposal was reviewed with the West End Civic Association, which convened on August 1st of this year. The association expressed non-opposition regarding the proposal and requested to be notified before the poster and billboard structures are removed so that they can be photographed by staff at the West End Museum. They did also provide a letter of non-opposition. At this time, the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services defers to the board's decision. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Just a little, um, second. I do, okay, Jay Walsh, are you looking to give testimony here? And send a request under here?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you state your name and address and briefly tell us if you're in support or opposition?
Sure. Thank you. Good morning, almost afternoon now, Jim, Members of the Board. Jay Walsh, on behalf of the Downtown North Association. We'd like to go on record in support of the application. Mr. Amara and his team met with us on numerous occasions. They've been very accommodating in telling us the differences between what they're proposing and what is there now. Additionally, the removal of the structure at the One Canal Building is something that has long been requested by many within our membership. And they've also been very accommodating on lighting issues that exist with the current structure relative to the residential building opposite them on Canal Street. And for those reasons, we'd like to be recorded in support.
Thank you. Okay, and I have no additional raised hands at the moment. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? With that, may I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
No.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
The chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you very much, Members of the Board.
Next, we have case BOA 1599860 with the addresses 332 West Broadway. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain the case to the board?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Stenbridge. Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Attorney Ryan Spitz with Adams &amp; Marancy, business editor of 168 H Street, First Floor, South Boston. I'm here on behalf of my client, Maverick Hospitality. The proposal in front of us today is seeking to add takeout in a live entertainment license after 10:30 to its current occupancy. This restaurant was previously known as Shenanigans, which was acquired by my client a little bit over a year ago. It appeared to have takeout license and live entertainment after 10:30 PM for that applicant only. The new restaurant is doing business currently as Layless. The operator has a stellar reputation in this community as well as other parts of the city of Boston operating restaurants. Takeout relief is a forbidden use permit in this sub-district. The live entertainment after 10:30 is also a forbidden use in this sub-district, but will not be any different than the previous restaurant's operations. The operator is proposing live entertainment seven days a week, no more than two acoustics from 10:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and an opportunity to allow a DJ on Thursday nights through Sundays from 9:00 PM to 12:00 AM. Windows will be closed by 9:00 PM when live entertainment occurs. Also, after reading the planning department's recommendation, there was a little bit of a discrepancy that they appeared to believe that there was a slight increase in a few seats as far as the occupancy. However, the current occupancy of 232 people remain the same. And again, that there is no proposed increase in occupancy. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to the board for any questions or comments.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, C. Johnson with the Office of Neighborhood Services. This proponent has completed the ONS community process. Our office hosted an abutter's meeting on June 3rd at which questions were answered about the proposal. The proponent stated that the request to add live entertainment is consistent with the use of the premises by previous owners. There were concerns raised about noise and noise mitigation. The St. Vincent's Neighborhood Association is an active civic group in this area and they have declined to take a position on this proposal and have encouraged the owner to continue conversations with neighbors to address the concerns of mitigating noise. With that background, we defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Members of the Board. Laura here from Councilor Flynn's office. At this time, Councilor Flynn would like to go record support. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, and it appears we have no additional raised hands. Thanks. Any other questions from the board?
Yes, I have one small question. Do we really need, do we really need live entertainment on a Sunday? I'm just curious about Sunday.
Yeah, so I mean, there is a need for it on some Sundays. And again, it won't be consistently each Sunday. And then one thing I think it's worth noting, since you did bring it up about the live entertainment. So when the new owners acquired this property, they went through extensive interior renovation, and they added additional soundproofing barriers to the roof and the actual walls as well. So those neighbors that did show up to the abutter's meeting, that did have those concerns, we did meet on site after the abutter meeting to show them where those changes were actually made. It seemed like they were responsive to it as well.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
With that, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you.
Next, we have two more companion cases. The first being case BOA 1565102 with the address of 8 Greenville Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1565094 with the address of 8R Greenville Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Thank you very much, Mr. Stenbridge, and Chair and Members of the Board. My name is Zach McNew. I'm the applicant for 8R and 8 Greenville. When I came in front of the board before, there were two items outstanding. I wanted to go meet with the community, which I have brought my abutters on the right and on my left to support. And I also sent a letter of the support from the community members themselves. The second line item outstanding was the easement situation in which I find out if I own both properties, it's hard to give myself an easement. So we were able to get a lawyer and a survey to change the addresses to 8R Greenville and 8 Greenville with the family members divided equally. And therefore, we were able to get that easement, and I sent it over. And with that, I will leave the board members to have, see if they have any questions. Yeah, we wanted to see the easement. They were sent-
Sir, do you want to just briefly walk us through it? There may be board members who were not present the last time this was heard.
I appreciate it. Thank you, yes. So if you go back up to the drawing with the color right there and zoom in, you would see that, let's see, I'm not sure if, yeah. I'm proposing a three-family row houses behind 8 Greenville, which comes from Greenville, following that blue line. Those blue lines are the underground utilities, and they would, these lines are going into the garage. So they would, the garages would be on the first floor. Second floor would be the kitchen and the bathrooms. Third floor would be the two bedrooms, and the fourth floor would be a one-master bedroom. And we are in a multi-family, and so we could have a six units. We're proposing six-story, but we're proposing four-story. And let's see. The, there is a big opening area between the two, like 75 feet, that open area at the moment. The existing 8R has an existing structure garage at the moment that will be demoed to be replaced by these three row houses. Three family row houses, three bedrooms each. And as I said earlier, the questions that we're under are easement and also going back to the community, which I have hopefully resolved us and sent them over.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Very quickly, have you made any changes to the plans since the last time you presented?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that question?
Yes, have you made any changes to the proposal since the last time that you presented to the board?
Uh, no, I have not, other than, other than registering easement as requested.
Thank you. Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Madam Chair, I'd like to hear from the planning department on their recommendation.
Mr. Hampton, are you available?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you, everyone. Jeff Hampton, City of Boston Planning Department. This is kind of a unique case, as I'm sure Mr. Stenbridge is probably inquiring why, that we are actually in support of the residential development behind it. However, this is one of those situations where, you know, I don't know the chicken and the egg about the increase of pavement, impervious surface to get there. We're in support of this residential use, but somehow there has to be some sort of work done on getting to the rear of that so that it is not completely paved over. And we need to increase the usable open space on this. So I do understand that what you had before you are two separate votes. One is to deny the extension of the access drive in the parking for, I believe it's, 8 Greenville. But we are in support of the development of the three-family behind it. So I'm not really sure if that's going to clear up things for you or make them even more muddy.
And Mr. Hampton, do you see the opportunity to address that through design review?
Um, I think this might come under one of those things. How much authority do you want to give the planning department in terms of design review? You know, is it, you know, removing the impervious space, increasing open space? I believe they might have insufficient off-street parking already. Is that something that we look at? This may come back to the board with a separate and completely different design altogether. So I'm not, this is kind of reminding me of London Street from a couple of weeks ago where, you know, if we go real heavy-handed on design review on this, you know, how much of this is really going to change? And now is it a complete, a completely different project? So if you would like, if the board seems fit to approve this project with design review with substantial, with, you know, telling us, giving us direction on substantial design, on open space, parking, you know, we'll give it a go and do the best that we can. But I don't know what, if anything, might happen with the actual design.
Okay, thank you. I mean, I do want to recognize that the applicant did do what the previous board asked him to do regarding the easement, so I'll just remind folks of that. Are there questions from the board?
Can I just, to, there will not be an increase of an asphalt. There is an existing asphalt at the moment that is the one that we're going to be using. So there will not be any destruction of a green space by building what it is. All we're taking care of is getting rid of a garage that's there and then build a building on top of it. And so there's no green space at all that we will be getting rid of. Thank you so much.
That's helpful. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? May we have public testimony?
Madam Chair, Members of the Board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would defer to the judgment of this board. Previously, ONS had hosted an abutter's meeting for this. There had been some concerns regarding, some residents felt that the plot was too small to support another building, as well as whether emergency services would be able to access that rear part of the property if issues arose. Some of the applicants continue to work with some neighbors and have secured letters of support the board might have access to. The applicant met several times with the Mount Pleasant Neighborhood Association, which they repeatedly kept asking to come back and provide more information, which he didn't. Ultimately, it does not sound like the civic and the applicant were able to see eye to eye. So I don't believe a stance was taken in support. But with that information, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
And there's, I had no, second, yeah, no raised hand at the moment. Thank you. Okay, thank you. And I do want to note that we do have letters of support on file. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
Okay, I'm going to try. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion of approval with review from the planning department, special attention to reducing the pavement areas and improving the parking configuration. And I'm hoping to see if any other board member wants to add a provision.
I think the applicant explained that was existing pavement, so that's what I think. Any other additions? Is there a second?
A second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The next case is deferred, but we will move on to case BOA 1601598 with the address of 142 Erie Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Let's go. Do we see the applicant? Oh, yeah, I see. Yeah, you're on. Yeah, go ahead. Sorry. Yeah, you're unmuted, Matt.
Okay, sound check. This is Matt Henzie for the developer. And am I being-
Yep, we can hear you.
All right, beautiful.
Beautiful. Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, for visuals. Okay, here's our presentation from last time. But I did submit a revised site plan for 142 Erie, the subject property. The one change that we made from our last appearance, the BTD rep, Otamico, asked us to revise the parking spot, which we have done. So it's not going to be in this plan set. It's in... I could screen share, but it's in the... It's in the revised site plan that we did per direction from BTD. So that's the only change. This drawing will not show it. Again, I did submit a revised site plan and a revised plot plan.
Do you want to just speak from this and tell us what you did differently?
Sure. So this is a plot plan for 142 Erie. It does not show the parking spot that's on our architectural site plan. If you can envision it, it's along the southerly property line coming in off of Erie Street, where we had it originally, it was right off the street. And BTD asked us to set that back. So now the parking spot is set back appropriately. And we have an email consent from Otamico. There it is. Beautiful. Okay, great. That is the architectural site plan. So if the members can see that, you can see we're coming in off of Erie. Now I have a driveway and a spot. And that is the only change. In order to accomplish this, we did move the footprint building slightly to the north, which made our northerly setback a little bit smaller by about a foot. So that, you know, those are the changes.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board?
Yes, I got one question. Well, I got two questions, really. I know on Erie Street, Erie Street is kind of like a tight place to park. I'm pretty sure it's probably no off-street parking on one of them sides. But I'm almost sure it's like a playground across the street. Is it any way possible that this developer was trying to help maintain that place for the kids to play? The parking lot? I mean, I'm sorry, the playground?
Yeah, it's the Erie Ellington Playground. Tremendous community victory, making that park happen. Covent Square, NDC was deeply involved in that. But anyway, yeah, we're well aware of it. We will be going to the Parks Commission for a design review per, you know, Parks Department Authority. A commitment to maintenance would be a new idea, Member Langham, and we'd have to take that under consideration. There's... That's a big...
Okay, that was just me. That was just me throwing that. That was just me throwing that out there.
Yeah, I mean, we are in very close touch with the main civic group, which is Erie Ellington Brinkley Civic Association. We have, you know, written approval from them. We did make a commitment to them to repair or replace a tool shed at another site, not at the tot lot, but at another open space site nearby. So, you know, we made that commitment to that group. It's the first anybody has suggested any maintenance of the tot lot park. So we'd have to think about that one.
Okay, thank you.
We just, we would need to analyze, you know, what does that mean and what's the cost? Because the cost ultimately, since this is home ownership, the cost would be borne by the nine low to moderate income homeowners. You know, Ace and O will not be... Once you sell the units, Ace and O will not be an owner.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Hearing none, can we have public testimony?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office has deferred to the judgment of this board. This went through an extensive MOH community process involving the applicant working with the local civic association, in this case, the Erie Ellington and Brinkley Partnership Neighborhood Association, which is supportive of this proposal. We're unaware of any concerns at this time. And as mentioned, many in the community are excited for these affordable units being added. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, my name is Dola Beckett with the Office of City Council, Brian Worrell. We would like to... The council would like to go on record in being in support of this project, given the process of support from the Erie Ellington Civic Association. Thank you.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment. Thank you. Any other questions from the board? May I have a motion?
I would like to make a motion of approval with review from the planning department.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have three companion cases. The first being case BOA 1466516 with the address of 250 Pond Street. Along with that, we have case BOA 1605958 with the address of 250R Pond Street. And finally, we have case BOA 1466520 also with the address of 250R Pond Street. If the applicant and/or their representative are present, would they please explain to the board?
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is David Gillies, and I am the owner of 250 Pond Street. I was asked to... This is not the right... This is the old site plan. And I was asked to resubmit a site plan showing... Oh, back, go back up, please. One more. Keep going. This is the resubmitted site plan showing parking for the proposed building as well as the fire truck access. There's also, I should note, an additional parking space within the structure. We are proposing to tear down an existing two-car garage and replace it with a two-story ADU, for lack of a better description, small dwelling unit on the property in the back. We are in violation of a number of issues with regard to setbacks and what yuck, lot footage, et cetera. And we are making some proposals to deal with those issues. We need to provide for a 10-foot fireman's access, which we will do. It'll simply require us cutting trees down and removing trucks. We have relocated... Actually, if you could scroll to the first floor plan, please. We have included a second means of egress and moved the primary entrance of the building so that it faces the street. Additionally, we are willing to sprinkle the building because it's about 250... It's just under the 250-foot guideline. But apparently, sprinklers would be required to... By the building department to approve this. Other than that, I think that addresses all the issues that were raised.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have public testimony?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This time, the Mayor's Office is going to defer to the judgment of this board. This applicant went through a lengthy community process involving both abutters meetings as well as meeting with the Jamaica Hills Association and the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council. Both civics voted to support this proposal. And there was also letters of support that were generated from the outreach that the applicant has done as well. With that, we'll defer to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Hey, we have a caller with a raised hand. I sent a... You can press star three, that'll unmute you. Caller 617548. Are you looking to give testimony on this proposal? Trying to unmute you.
Hi, this is David Willis from 63 May Street. Can I be heard?
Yep.
Hi, so I'm around the corner from the proposed development. My property overlooks the proposed development. I take issue with the scope of the development. I don't have a problem with garages being converted into in-law suites where there's a need. In fact, our other neighbor has done just that. They converted a garage into an in-law suite without expanding the footprint, without going upward. I do take issue with tearing down a garage and shoehorning a single-family home into the proposed space. So it's really an issue of scope. And I submitted a letter or email on June 9. I just wanted to make sure that that was entered into the record.
Thank you. We have no additional raised hands at the moment. Would the applicant like to respond briefly to that?
Sure. Can you switch to the massing study that I submitted? Is there a control on the screen?
Can you let me know which document?
Yeah, just scroll and there should be a photograph with a massing study.
Think he wants you to keep scrolling?
Keep scrolling. There it is. Okay, so the... What you see in the white is the existing garage. And what is not whited out is obviously the increase in mass for the property. I'll note that the existing garage is... Was built directly on the dirt. It does have a cement floor, but the structural members of the building are simply put on wood sleepers that rest directly on the ground. Structure must be about 50 years old and is rotting. The car roof is sagging, and it's no longer functionally... It's really, it's not very safe. And we certainly couldn't renovate it. The new structure is only seven feet taller than the existing structure. These existing structures, 14 feet, and the new one measures 20 feet 3 inches, I believe, overall. We are not changing the footprint. We're keeping the nature of the architecture actually mimics my house and same color. And I don't believe that the... You know, I think it's a far more attractive building and certainly more functional.
Thank you. Questions? Other questions from the board? Hearing none, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a... Sorry, go ahead, Katie.
I was going to put forward a motion of approval.
May I have a second?
Say, correct.
Mr. Stenbridge?
Yes.
Mr. Valencia?
Yes.
Mr. Langham?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Weewell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, and it looks like our next hearings are at 1 o'clock, so I will see you then.